Good evening and welcome to the May 11th, 2023 Danby Select Board Meeting. Please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Adam Bender.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Haynes.
Here.
Powers. Abson.
Beth, would you please read the procedure for remote access and tell us who is joining us remotely?
Right now, we have Annette Smith. And the procedure for remote attendance at select board meetings is as follows. Remote access to select board meetings, while not required by law, is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town's citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Businesses conducted and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees, in person or remote, who wish to comment on an agenda action item when it is addressed in the course of the meeting, should indicate such intention during the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: One, remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting remaining so, unless recognized to speak. Two, intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by the use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. Three, people will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online host will alert the chair to the presence of remote questions or comments. Four, remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Five, comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. This time limit will apply to in-person participants as well as controlled by the chair. Six, general ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. The procedures for the online platform and above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting, and we have done so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, next, I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda, even though it was recently updated, to include two new items, which is the Otter Creek Fund Center outside consumption permit and one more fleet permit. One other piece of business has come in that we'd like to put under "new business," and that's discussing the upcoming renewal of the sheriff's contract. So I'll entertain a motion to set the agenda, as I just discussed.
I'll make a motion to set the agenda, as you discussed.
I'll second it. Motion's made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimously. So next, we'll move on to public comment, and I'm going to call upon Dan for a little update about Memorial Day.
Thank you. I had asked Brad when I came in if I could speak just a little bit about the Memorial Day service, which we're having on the 27th at 11 o'clock. The 27th at 11 o'clock, that's a Saturday. And I'm inviting all of you, as well as anyone that's listening, to attend, and hopefully there are a lot of people watching this meeting on PEG TV. And I'm inviting everyone, please, please attend and help me and those gathered on our, those that have given their lives, so that we may be here doing what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Is there any other public comment? Michael.
So I wanted to discuss the appraisal that we got in the mail this week. I was very disappointed with what I had seen with the appraisers. First of all, my property just got separated from my parents' property, so it has not been on its own agenda at all. So there's been no real assessment of my property, and unfortunately, I was hurt when I was out of work, so I was home. And the assessor come down Holland Heights and sat in his car. Never got out of his car, never walked on my lawn, never knocked on my door. My dog was inside, so there was no reason for him to not do. And he assessed my house from roadside without leaving the confinement of his vehicle. So I got assessed at almost $160,000 for a 1972 trailer with a 10 by 20 outpost building. Looking at the numbers, doing a little figuration between other houses and stuff like that, just throwing a number out, and I'm not pointing any names or anything like that, but there's a house that sits on Easy Street, which is Keith Miller's house, which has almost the same amount of land. It is a complete cellar, a living space on the first floor, a living space on the third floor, on the third floor with two bathrooms, and it has a two-bay garage, and it has an outpost building, and he's only assessed for $30,000 more than my house. So I feel that there's a big discrepancy in these numbers. I feel that the assessment company robbed Danby of valuable information and valuable time in doing their job properly. They did not do a proper assessment on all these numbers. If you look at comparison numbers to people that have similar buildings, similar acreage size, the numbers are so far exaggerated that it's going to put this into a gold town. I have a barren piece of 10 acres worth of land that went from $40,000 to $70,000, which is just totally ludicrous. There's no reason for it to go 75%. That's just, just not even fair. I can see 10%, 15%, which is inflation. I understand that. But when you go 75% on a piece of land--
Henry, please stop.
When you go 75% on a piece of land that has a major power line going through it, it has no structural intercoursees on it, has no ingress, has no egress, there's no design system, there's not really any natural resources of any value on it, and to put it at a value of $70,000 is going to put this township into a gold digger's town. And it really is. There's no reason for a bare piece of land to be at $70,000. Now, I've greened both of my properties, and I have a meeting on Monday with the assessors, but I feel as a select board, you guys should do something about the way that we got treated as a township for the way they assessed us and the work that they put in for the money that they received. Now, I don't know if you guys had hired these assessors. I don't know what the select board was at time when these guys were hired. When were they hired?
Well, it was under a different board. If you were at the meetings, Brad--
I'm going to get the, say, three years ago.
Three years ago.
Brad tried to get them to hire the internal, because Brad and someone else had already taken the course to be able to do it, and the board at the time felt that they were unqualified to--
So I understand that. I'm not putting the blame on this board, but what I am saying is that the board that we have right now should look into the numbers that are in this piece of paper, because they're so far off that it's going to hurt the people that can't afford to live here as it is. And there's just astronomical numbers that are in this piece of paper. And if we got to start paying taxes on double the amount of volume of income that, or the outgo for taxes, it's gonna, we're gonna have all kinds of tax sales all over this town. And it's going to hurt us more than helping us. I can understand 10%, 15% all day long, because it's inflation, but 75% is just, it's not, it's not even on the board. And I'm sure the gentleman did the same thing up there. That piece of property just looked at the tax map and said, okay, here's $70,000. Because there's a piece of land that's on Raymond Road that's for sale for $111,000, which is going to sit there for that kind of money. Because I've talked to a couple of different people that are joining landowners, and neither one of them want to pay $11,000 an acre for a piece of land.
Mr. Chairman, that's five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Michael.
No, I would appreciate it if you guys would at least look into this, because it's just, it's not fair.
Are there any comments at this point?
Well, I had brought that up to Brad and asked him if the select board had any ability to, you know, what we can actually do as a board since, and I don't think there was a lot, the select board, because it's under the listers who are voted in as well to do. I mean, I agree with you grieving the taxes. Everybody, I mean, should be grieving some of these, because they are outrageous, and if they can show comparables, I guess I'd like to see them, and actually, the accuracy of them. You know, I had a property that they were totally off on the accuracy. They, like on the Silas, they never showed that half the building was taken down, and so the square footage is off by 50%. So, yeah, there is some significant issues there.
So they taxed my building as a, almost like a new tax law, a new tax bill, because there is no record of my building being separated.
We have to stick by the ground rules of you only speaking for five minutes, but if other board members want to comment based on what you gave us, I can allow them to do that now. But it really is a lister's issue, and I certainly encourage people to use their right of grievance if things are inaccurate. And I happen to be in the same boat. Any other comments? Any other public comments?
I'd have to agree with Michael. I mean, that piece of land that surrounds the schoolhouse, which I've re-done, that's 10 acres there. It belongs to Susan Peel. She lives down in New Jersey. That thing, that evaluation's gone up to $87,000 for that pile of rock. That's what it is. It's a pile of rock. I don't think you can build on it. And I happened to look at that, because I was interested in trying to purchase that, and because I've only got a third of an acre there. And, yeah, my assessment went from $85,000 to $259,000 there. Well, I understand that. I've done a lot of work on the building, but still punish me from doing a nice job.
Does the town have to accept that assessment?
I don't have--
Like--
I don't have the answer for that. I would have to ask our town attorney to comment on it.
Like, is it, can we just dismiss it? Or, I mean, is there, if there, I mean, like, say, more than 50% of people come and grieve it?
They have to go through the grievance process, is my understanding at this point.
Right.
But I don't want to say something--
And if it's like, if that many people are having a discrepancy with it? I don't know what that ties the town--
And I look through the list, I see a lot of inequality, and it talks about that on the front page of that forum, and said that they wanted equity across the board. And when you compare some of these things, it's very difficult to see how they arrived at that. So, any other public comment? Okay, I don't hear any other public comments, so we'll close that portion of the meeting. And we will entertain a motion to adopt two sets of minutes, the April 13th, 2023, and the special meeting of April 25th, 2023.
I'll make the motion.
Motion is made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Are there any comments, corrections, deletions to the notes? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting those sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so next, we have the Northshire Rescue Emergency Medical Services Agreement to discuss, and we have Mr. Ben Weiss with us this evening. Would you like to comment before we--
Sure. The EMS Services Agreement is between Northshire Rescue and the five towns that we serve, Manchester, Dorset, Danby, Mount Tabor, and portions of Winhaw. We, let's see, four years ago, we had the first three-year contract and hoped to, you know, keep renewing on a three-year basis. Manchester, you probably know, back at the end of the, close to the end of the first three-year contract, decided to examine the possibility of taking on a municipal rescue squad. They wanted to convert their fire department and train their fire guys to be medics. They quickly realized that it was not a money-- I think their motivation was, you know, we have significant medical revenues. We also have very significant costs. We're a nonprofit, and we raise somewhere around $200,000 to $250,000 a year in donations. Without that, we wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't be in business. And the town would lose that, you know, that portion of revenue. So they quickly, I think internally quickly decided they didn't want any part of that. So now we're back on the schedule to try to get all the towns to sign a three-year agreement. Basically, any party can get out of the agreement 12 months before the term is up. So after two years, you know, if Danby wanted out, give us 12 months notice, you can get out of the contract. And the same for us. We could, we could inform any town 12 months before the contract is up, that, you know, that we don't want to serve a town. Obviously, that's not the case, but-- And then, the contract also has a one-year evergreen clause, so it keeps renewing every year. And again, before those terms are up, you would have to give, you know, a 12-month notice if you want out of the contract. There's two parts of the fee. It's basically broken down into dues and service fees. So the dues basically covers the cost of new ambulances. We estimate, and actually, we just got a quote on a new ambulance that was $310,000 fully equipped. So we put in this contract $300,000 for an ambulance, $100,000 per year. So that's based on, per capita, of the five towns that we serve. So Danby is 15.7% of the total population of the five-town service area that we have. So that represents an annual fee of $15,676. And then the second part of the fee, the second part of the municipal support is based on number of service calls. And Danby is 7% of our service calls. And so basically, that fee, the total of that for the five towns is $216,000. That basically represents our deficit after, you know, medical revenues and after fundraising. So that is broken up, you know, based on number of service calls on a three-year rolling average. And then, like I said, Danby is 7% of our service calls. So that fee on an annual basis is $15,207. So that's the basics of the contract. You know, I'd be glad to go into anything about the squad. I know that there was a, there was an, well, there was a concern in Danby recently, and I don't, to the best of my knowledge, what happened is somebody called in Danby, not a 911 call, but a call directly to the squad office. It was during the big snowstorm in March, I believe. And the person calling said, what's the worst-case scenario of you guys coming here? And one of the medics who answered the call said, well, if we only have one crew, sometimes we have one crew, sometimes we have two crews, said, if we only have one crew on, if they are down at Bennington Hospital in the storm, it could be as long as three hours. So that's, that's not a great situation, but that's really worst-case scenario. You know, all the way to Bennington to Danby, you know, after dropping a patient in Bennington during the snowstorm. So I believe that's, that's what that was all about.
So if they called the squad direct, that's not considered an emergency?
It was not a service call. It was a question.
Oh, okay.
It was like, if we need you during this storm, what's the worst-case scenario? I don't know if they asked for a worst-case scenario, but they were told, you know, worst-case, here's what it would be. So, yeah, not, not a great situation, but by no means a normal situation.
But then you guys dispatched a squad.
How do we dispatch?
No, but you did dispatch a rescue squad for that call.
Uh, not to my knowledge. The calls that, the calls around that time, there were two calls in Danby. One was a 20-minute response, and one was called off, you know, with another squad, or, you know, they didn't need service. So we checked, I don't know, I'm not sure who I was emailing with. It might have been Brad, it might have been somebody else. And then there was another proposed date. We checked that. Again, either a quick response or no service calls. So, I mean, we're glad to check any of our records.
Well, no, I think the concern that came to all of us was that if the response times are that far out, I mean, because if you tell me it's a three-hour response time on a 911 call, that is very concerning to me. I would think it would be concerning to you as well.
Sure. I think in that situation, you know, that would get dispatched to another rescue squad. I mean, if we have, and case in point, if we have, you know, we normally have two crews. So if we have one ambulance that's at the Southern Hospital, and there's a call here, it really depends on who can be dispatched quicker. You know, it could be coming out of Granville, it could be coming out of Rutland Regional. So there's mutual aid on every 911 call. So it's not like the only people that can serve you are, you know, Manchester Rescue Squad.
Yeah, that's a new piece of land here before, the ambulances in Bennington. The way I had heard the story was it was going to take three hours to get from Manchester to Danby Fort Horners.
Which I don't think is, I mean, that one instance just brought to us that we should discuss if there is a deficit in the ability to service the town, you know, that we should all talk about it in the open. Is it you guys aren't funded properly? Is it you're, you know, understaffed? Not to get into that particular event, because that event, you know, is past, but is it a warning of impending problems or impending response times? Because I know, me personally, that would scare the heck out of me if I had to call for rescue and it was, you know, a three-hour response time. If that wasn't the case, I mean, maybe the, you know, and when it goes through other people, things get actually construed a little. But you guys feel you have the adequate staffing in--
Yeah, we have not been able to fiddle, basically, what we try to do is from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM, have two crews on. So two ambulances, one paramedic on each ambulance and one EMT, advanced EMT on each ambulance. That's our goal. We don't always, we're not always able to do that. There's a, there's a statewide shortage, there's a national shortage of medics. You know, they make, EMT makes $14 an hour, advanced EMT makes 16, the paramedic can make $20 an hour. I mean, you can make more money working at some good donors.
Right.
And there's a lot of training involved, there's a lot of certification. So we have gone through, realizing that that's, this is a problem. We have boosted our base rates up. And just recently, we've had two new hires, so that's good. I think we're getting to a situation where we'll have two crews almost all of the time, which is where we were a few years ago. But our call volumes are up.
Do you guys have, like, a protocol for mutual aid, like a timestamp of we can't get there next amount of time?
Yeah, and we're dispatched by Manchester Police Department, so they handle that. I can't tell you exactly what it is, I could find it out. But yes, there's, you know, and we do mutual aid for other squads as well. So that's, that's really, in these times of staff shortages, that's critical, that, you know, all of these services will cover each other.
May I ask Mr. Weiss a question? Was it the impression of the person answering the telephone that the caller was trying to size up their situation and decide if they really needed emergency help?
That was--
Was it kind of like--
I'm getting this all secondhand.
This is third-hand or secondhand?
Yeah, yeah, third-hand's even better. Yeah, my understanding, as it was explained to me, was, you know, if I need your services during this snowstorm--
How long could it possibly take?
What's the longest it would take?
And they were saying, if there were a scenario where the ambulance is already in Bennington, it could take this long.
Yes.
But they weren't necessarily saying, the ambulance is in Bennington now, and it will take this long if you need us now.
Right, right. I mean, our call times to Danby are 20, 25 minutes, I mean, depending where, on average.
Yeah, I mean, I've never heard of this incident, you know, type before, but when we do hear of that, I think it just happened that it coincided with us signing our contract and it, you know, said, you know, we should find out if you guys feel that you're adequate-- you know. I would rather be part of the solution than the problem and bashing, you know, the squad if, you know, for response times, if there's more that can be done to assist in anything. And so it wasn't a call you in here to bash the squad at all, it was a call you in here to find out, you know, maybe if there is any issues that you guys are dealing with that other towns that we could, you know, help facilitate.
And one of the things we're doing is we are training, for instance, we are training Dorset Volunteer Fire Department to all become first responders. And we're, you know, open to do that with any fire department. So that's, that's a great, you know, great service to have in, you know, some of the more remote areas of our service.
Great, yeah, great.
Now, I have a question too. I know that you utilize Granville quite heavily for this area.
Yep.
How are they set up to take over some of the calls?
I honestly, yeah, I don't know anything about Granville. I could find out, yeah, you know, I cycled by their, you know, by their office a few times. It looks like their three ambulances, I don't know if they staff two on a regular basis, I'm not sure. Good question, I'd be glad to find out.
That's pretty much your go-to squad for this area?
I would think so, yeah. Again, I'm not sure how Manchester Police Department, you know, goes through mutual aid, but I would, I would assume they would do it based on proximity first, you know, and if that's not available, they'd go to, you know, to a larger radius to see, you know, the next squad that could serve. I mean, I would think Rutland Regional would be another.
Well, Wallingford is Walling.
How long is Rutland?
Wallingford.
Oh, Wallingford, sure, good. I mean, one of the problems with Northshire Rescue that isn't a problem in Bennington and Rutland is that they get significant revenues from doing hospital transports. You know, Rutland Regional, for instance, is right there at the hospital. So they can do hospital-hospital transport, which is very lucrative, you know, so they have the ability to pay their medics more. Same with Bennington, they can do hospital-hospital transport. If we got into that business, first of all, it takes an ambulance out of our, you know, service realm, and secondarily, we would have to drive all the way to a hospital, pick the patient up and drive to another hospital, you know, transfer to Albany or whatever. So they, you know, those are bigger organizations because of that. I mean, all of our transports take us offline for quite a bit. You know, we'll either go to Rutland Springfield or-- You know, we'll either go to Rutland Springfield or SVMC.
No, and I want to reiterate that we're very grateful for Rescue, you know, for the Manchester Squad. And I think you've answered most of the, you know, question that we had about that. It was concerning more thing, and, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse on the same, but we could hear three hours as a response time without putting it into context. It's just something that I think we should, yeah.
If there's no other questions, I'll entertain a motion to sign the agreement.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor of signing the agreement, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to sign this and Dreah, could I ask you to make a quick copy of this, please? And give one, uh, give the original to Ben, one for me.
And then we will give you a copy with all of the towns before we execute the copy. That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you taking the time to come up here. Okay, so next we have the Green Mountain Power Permit for some electrical work on Easy Street.
Yeah, I think that after getting to re-review it, um, the only thing I would like to add to it, and I don't know. Kenny, did you see the, um, and Steve's aware of it, that I think we should just add to the permit that they're required to be one foot under any culverts they go under. That should give us...
I think that should be added. Yeah, that would make sense.
And then that way, in 10 years, when we're digging up a culvert to replace it, we're not on top of a...
Yeah.
...power line. Other than that, I can't think of anything. Um, their map showed them pretty much going up the center of our road where our least chance of going down four feet is. I mean, the shoulders were going to be working and stuff, so...
Right. So, just sorry, do you want to add that?
I think we should just add in there that, um, any, you would call them culvert crossings, even though you're going under, any culvert crossings must be, um, one foot below the...
Bottom of culvert.
Bottom of culvert.
Minimum of one feet, yeah.
Yep.
Any culvert crossings must be a minimum of one foot below bottom of culvert.
Yeah.
Simple.
I think that's his...
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor of this permit, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this is one that requires everybody's signature. Okay, the Otter Creek Fund Center has, um, a liquor license that pertains to serving indoors. And they have filled out the paperwork with state to expand it to, um, allowing the consumption of beverages under their tent outside. And, um...
So it's going to be all consumed under the tent part?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
An application for outside consumption permit license has been submitted to the Vermont Department of Liquor and Lottery Division of Liquor Control. The license applied by the applicant requires the approval of the local commissioners prior to consideration of DLC. Application has been routed to Danby for consideration and action. After your approval, the system will route the application back to DLC. Applicant will be notified when this occurs.
There's no thing in where they're...
Yeah, it's not really saying if it's, is it the whole premises or just...
There's 140 acres there, so...
Yeah, no, when I spoke with him, he told me, oh, description of type of event, fenced-in patio area.
I made the motion, we sign it.
I'll second it.
Our motion is made and seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, here we go.
You've just allowed me to eat my hot dog over there and have a beer outside. Thank you.
Well, I think Steve made the motion because he wants to go down there and start tilling that soil and wants to have a beer on the way back.
Okay, and then we'll move on to the road commissioners' report for an update on our current projects.
Okay, um, today we, you got your concrete poured okay for the structure down in front of the Masonic Temple? So in case anyone's been through the village for the last year or two, that structure in front of the Masonic Temple that's been slowly settling is now adequately back to. Once concrete dries, it's going to be, it's concrete now. It was a stone laid with a little mortar, um, structure, which I'm surprised it lasted as long as it did. It was probably, that's going back.
Hundred years, roughly.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was clay tile at the bottom.
With clay tile at the bottom, so, um, that, that's fixed. So hopefully, um, that's not a hindrance for people parking along there. I know at the library, it's, people were stretching down there would almost run into it, so... Parish Hill is, let's say it's 99.9% cut back now. Or should have been 99.8, Steve.
I'd say 98%.
I, I know, I know you guys have heard about the Parish Hill getting the brush cut for quite a while, but that is, our road grading is, um, last week wasn't a good week to grade roads, um, with the rain. So, um, this week, um, every day he's graded.
Every day Larry has graded and we got chloride this morning. So we were able to put chloride onto the, the roads that have been graded to keep the dust out.
Yeah, so we should have the roads in the next, what's he probably got, three or four more days of getting...
Probably has three or four more days to get it completely wrapped up, but he will not begin next week.
So you're going to run the grader?
If that's what you want.
So we should have the, um, roads hopefully wrapped up here, um, you know, before they harden in like a rock. And I don't know, we haven't started any of our culverts yet, right? But that's our next...
We haven't started any culverts, but we did start, uh, some repair work on one of the dump trucks that we should have wrapped up beginning of next week.
And our chipper's fixed now?
Chipper's fixed now, and thank you, Ken, for allowing us to borrow yours to keep us cutting on Parish Hill. And, um, we've got some work to do in the village, setting marble with the quarry for the...
Fountain.
Fountain. That should be finished up Monday as well, the work that we have to do on that.
And I guess we're on to the appointment.
Well, before we go to that, um, now that you've fixed that catch basin, what's the, um, what's the next step in where the water goes that's collected there?
Well, I don't want to bite off more than we can chew starting summer up with getting down there in a quagmire. I mean, Kenny's dug down there before.
It's wet everywhere.
And it may seem simple to put in 800 feet of pipe, but it's, it'd be quite pricey to take that on if we ended up, and...
So are we going to get bids from an outside firm? Or are we going to figure out what it's going to cost and do it in-house or what?
Well, I don't have an answer for what we're going to do. I mean, it's only been a problem for 35 years.
I know.
So I hate to put it to the top of the list right now, is, is hard to do. I, I know you had mentioned we have ARPA money. And I guess I didn't...
I know if I had water coming into my basement for the last 35 years because of a broken drain pipe, I'd be pretty upset.
I guess I don't have an answer for it. I think we can discuss it more. But for now, um, I, I mean, we, we've checked the ends. You guys checked the middle.
Right. We did that. We checked on, we worked on the ends a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, worked with the state to open that up on the backside of Crosby's. The problem that we're dealing with is the water table is so high, there's nowhere to get rid of the water. And how far are we going to go down to pull that water out of the basements and not have a place to bring it to daylight?
Well, that pipe daylights by the stop sign at Route 7 by McCollum's garage.
So the way Ken is describing it though, it's the water table itself. It's not necessarily that storm pipe.
Well, I think what Brad's saying is...
When the water goes down the storm pipe, it bubbles up in two places along Depot Street and then at Ponds, and then it goes into...
I think, I think what...
Basements.
And I, I'm not speaking for you, so I'm just saying what my, my thoughts on it are. I don't think that one pipe leaking up is raising the whole water table throughout the lower part. I think it's a lot to do with the ditches that are not being cleaned down by the highways that go, you know, what they used to call sewer brook out the back there. If those could be opened up, but I, I know what you're saying is it, it looks quite intrusive when that water bubbles up out of there. But if you think about it, what, what is it, maybe 10, 20,000 gallons and a thing goes there? I mean, that, that's kind of, doesn't really raise the water table in that area. It would probably, it contributes to it. But I don't know if we fix that pipe and none of the village water that goes into that drain went all the way down through, I don't know if it would actually solve the problem. So if we spent $200,000 to fix a thing that really didn't fix the water table, are we just wasting money on it is, is the concern we could get into? And I was hoping that we would have another issue or something around there where we could do more. But I, I guess to answer it, as, as you just asked me, um, I don't have any plans. And obviously, as a board, we can discuss going farther with it. To take on a major project done, 200 feet of road that's ours and 300 feet of Mount Tavers, maybe 400 feet of Mount Tavers.
It's our water that has to go someplace.
Yeah, no, it is our water, but I, I...
Besides Mr. McCollum's basement.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I think, I think we would solve some of the problems by putting that down through there, but I don't think we're going to lower the water table of, because basically, when it gets to the highway anyways...
Got nowhere to go.
And we know that there's a whole water table issue because after Irene, it filled in the creek behind Otter Creek Fund Center, and that's only the steep now. So it doesn't really flow to the north like it used to.
I think if Kenny went down there and dug all them ditches out on the backside, it would take, it would probably take five years to lower the water table once the ditches, because it took that long to raise it. I mean, the water don't just absolutely leave it, so...
Well, if you look at some of the railroad crossings and stuff down there below Griffiths, that water is a foot and a half higher than, than it's been. Everywhere is there, it's high for some reason. Somewhere is it's backing up.
Well, between Beaver Dams and the, and the, I mean, there's got to be eight or 10 Beaver Dams down through that area.
And that, that drain at the Masonic, if you were to pipe that to get rid of that water just below the surface, you're not going to grab anything out of anybody's basement anyways.
Yeah, and our drainage pipe isn't that great.
I'm not talking about what's in their basement for that reason. What happens is where the sandbags are on Mark McCollum's property.
It bubbles up out. You've seen it or not?
It bubbles up there. It makes a pond, and that pond runs into the old McCollum House basement. And then the water evaporates or gets some pumped out or whatever, and then it's good until the next rain event. It's not like it's ever been a wet basement or, um, you know, gets it from the low water, the high water table.
Yes, I don't know. I guess we could look into more what we, what we could do, but...
Yeah, no, I mean...
It's a big project.
When you opened the end of that up, Ken, do you remember what size the pipe is?
No, it's not a very large pipe.
The, the one that we worked on at that catch basin, uh...
It's probably six-inch clay.
No, it was, a 15-inch culvert would just slide over the outside once I cut the bell off.
So it's 12-inch clay.
So it's probably 12 to 14 inside.
And see, the mystery is where at daylight, when you stop sign, it's, um, a metal culvert.
Well, my thought was if, if that's what we're looking at, I would get a price on new culvert for that distance. That would give us a starting point of what we'd be looking at as far as piping goes.
How deep is that, that outlet of that height of the catch basin?
Uh, probably three feet into the ground.
Okay, so it's not, not very deep then at all?
It's not very deep there, no.
Well, I don't think we have to replace the one under the...
Well, would it be worth our time to, um, have that explored with a snake that they can tell us? You know, is it, is it where it's broken? Is it clogged? Why is it bubbling up?
I mean, I, what do they charge? Couple hundred bucks for that?
Yeah, I wonder if they could go in with a camera?
I mean, I, yeah, the snake with the camera. I think that would be the way to begin.
I mean, because most of the sewer guys have it now, right? Yeah, I mean, that's...
Would they be limited on distance? Because you'd have to be starting right at...
Well, I think we know that from Mark's house to the catch basin, it's wide open. Because the water comes down through that perfect. It's from where it bubbles up out down to the next section. And Mark says that Georgia stuff sticks in there all the time is what plugged it up. So I'm assuming that it's somewhere just the other side of Mark's is where it's plugged off. And then, um, you got to go the last 300 feet, you know, it could be. And they could probably come up from...
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The other side. The other side.
I'm trying to remember, we did a water line for Georgia.
Right in front of there.
And I don't remember hitting it.
Well, I think a lot of that got dug up during the water project in ninety-five. And so some of it probably isn't even there. And for some reason it didn't get hit from Mark's to the Masonic Temple, but it did get hit going down through that last little part.
Yeah.
No, I mean, it it's it's not a lot to have them. I mean, they might be able to tell us that it goes fifty feet or a hundred feet up from there, and that would tell us, well, we gotta tie in here, and then we know it's good at Mark's. Um, I mean, if we gotta work in the road.
I almost think when we did Georgia's, that pipe would have been more toward the road than, because we hooked to the.
We had to, we had to put a new saddle on there. Remember they had patched that blue root pipe with like an old bucket or something? It was absolutely totally unprofessional.
Yeah, I don't remember hitting it. I don't remember seeing it or repairing it either. I could look back into pictures.
Yeah, we had pictures of it, and there was a clay tile pipe that was packed right full of sand.
Oh, when they replaced Georgia's?
And parts of the clay tile had broken off and it was just like molded sand there. So I I would like to see you proceed with getting it snaked and finding out what we're up against.
Then I can, you could probably get ahold of Door, one of the companies and see what they would charge us to come up and spend a couple hours and.
Okay, um moving on, we had advertised for an on-call position. And it looks like we only received one application.
Well, um what do we just make a motion that we? It's probably the easiest, yeah?
Yep.
I make the motion that we hire Elijah Haynes for the on-call position um for the town of Danby.
I will second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any abstentions?
Me.
Thank you. Motion carries. Uh next, we have a paving contract to award. So we advertised for paving. For this year, we received bids from three different companies, Peckham Pike and Fuller Sand and Gravel. The uh bids were opened as advertised at ten o'clock in the morning on the seventh of April. And the results were, Peckham, seven hundred sixty-four thousand, one hundred eighty dollars and five cents. Pike, five hundred twenty-eight thousand, seven oh five and sixty cents. And Fuller Sand and Gravel, four hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make the motion, we award the contract to Fuller Sand and Gravel.
I will second that.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Clerk, would you please call the board?
Yes, sir. Abbott?
Yes.
Fuller?
I'm staining.
Bender?
Yes. Yes. Motion is carried. The bid is awarded to Fuller Sand and Gravel. Motion to approve fleet permits for Brown's Certified Welding, DF Transportation, Driscoll Brothers Excavating and Lathrip Forest Products.
I'll make the motion, we approve them.
I'll second.
I'll third it.
All those in favor of approving these um permits, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion's carried. Uh I believe we have nothing new on the transfer station procedures. Um correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so we will skip that. And is there any old business? Under new business, uh where do we go here? We received an email from Sheriff David Fox that uh is looking to draft a new contract with the town for twenty-three, twenty-four uh in the next few weeks, and uh he was wondering if we were interested in having hours increased, uh and any other concerns that we might have.
Um, how much of our budget have we got left from last year? I, we don't have a current one today, and that's the thing is, I mean, I know we had discussed upping it and we increased our budget on it. So how much of it didn't we use? So how much are we, um I think we should try to maximize our, I mean, we budgeted for it, the town all saw that it's on the budget. So I think we should increase the hours by whatever we can.
We did increase them some, I know that. Um so you're asking.
Well, did his rate go up any?
Yes, his rate did go up. Um I cannot tell you exactly how much, but I remember seeing a.
Yeah, I remember seeing one of his emails that he was increasing his rates, but I can't remember what it was.
He sent us an email to the, thank.
It was a while back when he was talking about increasing their service costs.
And I still have my perennial complaint about um the hours that the traffic is um monitored. You know, we have asked that certain places be monitored at certain times, and that just never seems to happen.
I have a question. When he's on Route Seven, is that during our time?
Yes.
Yeah, and I think we've all, or at least a few of us have discussed that I would rather see the state police enforcing Route Seven more than.
Our whole reason for putting another ten thousand dollars in the budget for these hours was to control speeding in certain areas, Timoth Road, Brook Road, Main Street.
I know there's a few times that I'd like to see him on our work zone. Because we've had people that have gone right through the stoplights.
And the thing is, I know it's hard to know when to find him, but when you do find him, he's been good as far as um going to those areas and setting up every now and then. I mean, South Main he's done quite a bit with. Um we still get, there was one or two that just fly through there no matter what. But um he he does set up down there, and it does make a big difference.
And periodically he's set up out here by the fuel tanks watching the hill. And he's also set up by Doug White's burn different times. And that's another good spot to catch him.
I've also seen him quite often over by the firehouse.
Yep.
Yeah, and those are the areas. I mean, I I guess I would like to know, or I would, you know, how many hours he is spending out patrol in Route Seven for us? Because I hate to say it, um the state police can have Route Seven to patrol. Um if, you know, we've got a pretty limited budget. And if we ask him if he could spend more time on the, on our main roads.
Well, can we put that in our contract um to?
Excluding, exclude the state highways from your patrol?
Yeah.
I don't see why they would care.
Or maybe put a footnote in there saying town roads only? Or somehow written that.
Specific concentration on these roads that we just mentioned.
Well, I don't wanna say just those. I mean, Scottsville deserves patrol and and Danby Mountain and Calvin Hill. They all deserve him to make ride around, so I, I I I don't wanna put in, well, Brad wants him in front of his house.
Well, you know, I'm gonna tell you, it's not in front of Brad's house, but there's a house two doors up here that has seven children in it. And those children ride their bikes up and down the road as children would do. And there was somebody yesterday who went up the hill in a white car, young man, at easily sixty-five miles an hour.
No, and I think we're back to the point that, yes, we, that's where the question came up is, and I said we wanna maximize our budget out as much as we can get. Now, I think we should talk to them or point out to them that we're not as concerned with Route Seven.
Right.
Because that does have the state police coverage, that we're more concerned with our town roads, as Kenny had mentioned. I don't wanna give them the only ones, because I'm sure people on Calvin Hill feel that people fly up through there, and he should be able, and the other thing is too is, it's not only speed enforcement. I mean, we still do have criminals and for presence of.
Well, one of the things that is, I feel wrong, the criminals are checked upon by the sheriff on our time. And to me, that should be a function of.
Oh, you said they're double dipping.
Of a different department. You know, that's either probation and parole or whatever. I, I have a.
Well, let me check who our liaison is. Oh, it's Brad Bender.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I I I think you probably should just email David with our concerns as a board.
I will.
And as far as the contract, and I don't wanna, I mean, I guess I can make a motion if you guys all, that I feel.
No, I think it's just a discussion.
Yeah, that we should, you know, should maximize out our, I mean, I would like to see as much presence of the police department in the town of Danby as we can. And, you know, it's not just for the speed enforcement. I mean, that is a good thing, but um the um, the fact that we do have criminals running around stealing things still is.
And then, and like Steve brought up too, um couple, three or four times in these work zones, we'll let people know that, you know, they're keeping an eye on what you guys got going on.
Well, I think that's the thing is too, is it's it's almost like they need to, I know a lot of the local, like Wind Hall, when we're working up there, they will actually, you know, Trevor, the road foreman reaches out because they have their own police department, and he'll set up on both ends of it. It's kinda hard in this instance because their, way their schedules are. But I don't know, maybe you can work something out with David to keep more of an open dialogue of when their patrol. I mean, I know he's not gonna give you every minute of his things, but if we could coordinate some schedules with, you know, the road crew and when they're to set up.
Cause last week, uh when we were working on Parish Hill, Doug White was hauling roundbells and he was sitting at the stoplight waiting, and he had two cars come up behind him and went right around him. And they were, at that point in time, they were just passing us when the light below turned green and another vehicle started up through.
And you couldn't get a tree cut fast enough to?
No, couldn't. Would if I could, but I couldn't.
An excavator bucket would reach right out and stop him real quick.
That has happened on that job. Larry has swung an excavator bucket around to stop people.
We didn't hear that.
Because, no, it was out of safety because the tree was gone and it had to be, and that was another, we're ninety percent sure that they ran the light and I was dropping a tree when Larry saw him coming down the road and he just swung over and, you're not going. So once in a while, I think it'd be a good thing.
What kind of hours do we have now and what kind of potential hours can we utilize?
We have twelve hours a week?
Yeah, I'm, I I can't tell you off the top of my head.
I think it's a luck for sure.
Isn't that shared with Timoth?
No, no, that's just us.
Just us.
I know at one point it was ten.
Ten?
Ten?
That's sticking in my head for some reason.
We got two tens and one twelve.
Well, and I think where I'm getting the twelve from is then, we said, you know, we have this extra ten thousand, we want you to do a little more, and I think he gave us two more hours a week.
Well, I guess what I would suggest is see what we can maximize our usage up to. And then send them an email and say, yeah, we're looking for four, four hours a week or something. And at the same time, you can either ask them to come down to a meeting with us if the whole board wants, you know, I'm sure he's willing to, or you can deal with it yourself with them.
Yeah, I think we can probably just handle it with emails. Okay, any other things you want me to uh mention to him? Okay, any other new business? How about a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned at uh. Eight-ten. That clock still is two minutes slow.